I ought to stand up for you again.
Ready, Chris? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I like to call the December 6, 2021 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Reese Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Bobby Gasol. Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We do not have a business promotion this evening, so we will go straight into the agenda items. And first is the approval of the minutes of the November 15, 2021 Crest Hill City Council meeting. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the November 15, 2001 Crest Hill City Council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We also have before you the minutes of the November 8, 2021 Crest Hill, City of Crest Hill Work Session. Motion would be in order.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Verche for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on November 8, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the work session of the City of Crest Hill held on November 22, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So moved. It's presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the work session minutes held on November 22, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the work session held on November 29, 2021 at the Public Works Building, 2090 Oakland Avenue. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for the approval of the November 29, 2021 work session. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You have the minutes before you of the Crest Hill Work Session held on November 30, 2021 at Chaney-Monji Grade School located at 400 Elsie Avenue. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the November 30, 2021 Work Session. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
I was not there, so I will pass.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina, because you passed, I have to come back to you.
Then I will say, "Present." How's that?
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the Crest Hill Work Session held on December 1, 2021 at the Carillon Lakes Clubhouse, which is located at 21325 Carillon Lakes Drive. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Kubal, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin for the approval of the December 1, 2021 Work Session minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Abstain.
John Verche.
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And finally, you have before you the minutes of the December 2, 2021 Crest Hill Work Session held at the Richland Grade School Gymnasium, 1919 Caton Farm Road. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Sapiti, seconded by Alderman Albert for the work session held on December 2, 2021. Questions or comments?
Mayor, just one correction on this, and I did talk to Chris about it. The second and last paragraph on page two, Mr. Bannon asked about a question about surface water, not service water in Wells.
Okay, to the motioner? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, with the correction. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Chris?
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Abstain.
John Verche.
Abstain.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with our agenda items to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one item before you on the agenda. It's a resolution terminating consulting and legal contracts, legal services contracts. I noted that there is one typographical error in the resolution that needs to be corrected with respect to, it's NJN, Inc., and not NHN. It was a mad dash to get it into your packet on Friday. I apologize for that. But it's a resolution terminating the contracts of Camero's Limited and William R. James, NJN, Inc., Nick Narducci, Castle Law, Scott Anhoster, Mary Reardon Limited, Mary J. Reardon, and Ansel Blink PC, and David S. Silverman. Happy to answer any questions, but I believe that this was discussed in meetings with each ward and each ward's alderpeople individually and staff.
So moved. It's presented.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Kubal for the resolution terminating contracts. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Resolution 1124.
Anything else, Mike?
No, sorry.
Okay, any questions of city attorney? Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our management consultant, Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have two items and then one comment. First item before you is a resolution approving an exclusive listing agreement to sell in between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Edgemark Commercial Real Estate Services, LLC. This was presented at a workshop two weeks ago regarding Edgemark listing this property as a commercial entity and try to sell it for a commercial entity and bring some desired-type retail opportunities here to Crest Hill.
So moved. It's presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sapiti for a resolution approving an exclusive listing agreement to sell buy-in between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Edgemark Commercial Real Estate Services, LLC. Questions or comments?
Steve, I meant to call you today on this, and it slipped my mind, but is there any possibility that we could, as a municipality, try to work with the state to obtain ownership of the right-of-way, to make it easier for the next property owner on the other side of that creek to kind of...
Yeah, that's a great question. So the mayor, myself, Brent Hassert, Larry Walsh, Jr., our state, excuse me, our representative, and John Connor, our state rep, our state senator...
And Pat McGuire before.
And Pat McGuire before that, we have met as of recently, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, to get this moving. Larry Walsh, Jr. has made a phone call and tried to speed up the process. As we know, the state moves at its nails pace, right, and that's probably quick, but it is on their radar, and we do have the right political people working on it to get it donated to Crest Hill.
Okay. All right, and then we'll obviously work with the next property owner if that transition takes place.
Correct, correct. You know, one of the property, one of the questions Ed Marsh did have was who owns this property. The one of the negatives is to get that creek running right through it, right, and there's some wetland buffers and barriers on both sides, but certainly it'd be a really nice entrance feature to really nice commercial development, so they would like to have that as part of their overall plan. It'd be very expensive to build something on it because of the creek, but it'd be really nice landscape-looking-type overlook, lack of a better term. But yes, we are working with the state, along with them paying us over a million and a half dollars in light-water bills. We're working with the state on those two issues.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1125.
Next item, as discussed in our ward meetings, I'd like to have you consider a resolution approving a professional service agreement buy-in between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Harbor Contractors. Chris Kozak from Harbor is here today. He is here to answer any of your questions. They have extensive experience in working on construction projects and going back and putting together closeout packets and so forth, the things that we've discussed in our two-on-two meetings. So Chris is here. He'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Chris Kozak?
Well, one good thing about their contract is I know that there's a do-not-exceed amount, but if you notice their contract, the way Chris had structured it, and the way I asked Chris to structure it, is that there's kind of layers. And so he's got his first set of tasks. He will not move on to the second set until either the city administrator, I know Jim Marino's here, either Jim approves it, city council approves it, but he will not move on to the next task until it's approved, until this one's finished, and then move on to the next task upon your approval, so that you're kept aware of what's going on.
Appreciate that.
Chris, would you like to make any comments or wait till after the vote?
Oh, no, I just want to thank everybody.
Come to the microphone, please.
No, just I'd like to thank everybody and, you know, let everybody know a little bit about Harbor Contractors. If you don't know, we're a local company. We're at a playing field. We're a family-owned company, been around for 60 years. We do a lot of construction management work and municipal market. We've done several jobs for the Village of Romiaville, several jobs for Will County. We're currently remodeling their county office building, did their animal control, their emergency management facility, the Will County ADF. We've done a lot of municipal city hall centers, Morris Municipal Center, Oak Brook Terrace Municipal Center, doing Woodridge Police Station and Municipal Center and Public Works. So we've got a lot of experience in that, and the whole thing, we set this thing up again, is to be very transparent. There's a lot of documentation that goes with completing a construction project and getting all the paperwork in order to help protect the city's interests in that. So like Steve said, I structured it very step-by-step, you know, for each stage. We'll come to forward with, here's a task, you know, we've obviously got to understand the project a little bit more and do an initial intake on it, but each task, we'll put together estimate hours, and we won't exceed anything on that, so we'll be very step-by-step on that. So that's kind of our approach. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I appreciate your comments and the transparency especially. There's one thing I can tell you, I really want to be informed on process and what's going on going forward, so thank you for that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, correct?
No.
No? Okay. Any other questions, then? All right, I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sapiti for a resolution approving a professional service agreement buy-in between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Harbor Contractors Incorporated. Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1126.
And I just have one comment, Mayor and Council. I just want to give my thanks to Mark Seifert and his team, Robert's Engineering, Chris Alm, Mark's employees, Strand, you know, all the individuals that worked in those presentations. I want to compliment the council, the mayor. It was a first-class presentation from beginning to end. It was very well received, not only by the information, the way it was disseminated to the public, but the professionalism, the way the room was set up. Our brand was out there throughout the entire course of the meetings, and Mark, you did a great job, and everybody that helped with you did an awesome job. Lisa, you know, Ron, the individuals that worked the stations, the council, great questions, the mayor, understanding and being transparent with the public. And so I just want to thank everyone involved, because I thought it was just a very, very first-class operation for four straight nights. So thank you, guys.
Well, thank you.
Okay, any questions of management consultants? All right, thanks, Steve. And before I forget my mistake, I did receive a text from Alderwoman Oglazal earlier this afternoon. She's a little under the weather today, so she is excused for this evening's meeting. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifert. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items for you this evening. I did want to thank all the residents who came out, council who came out to last week's public forums. We do have the website up and running, www.cityofcresthill.com/futurewater. That's cresthill.com/futurewater. The presentations are there, a lot of information's there. We have set up an email address. If any residents are interested in asking questions, futurewater@cityofcresthill.com. Check our Facebook, check our Twitter page. It has been blowing up with information, so we're trying to get anything out there. We're working on a couple more things to come out this week, so stay tuned for those. But once again, thank you to the residents who came out. Thank you to my staff. We worked a lot of long hours last week to make sure every resident had the same experience and all the information they could possibly get about the future of Crest Hill's water supply. And then also, the Second Annual Holiday Parade is December 18, starting at 11:00 a.m. And that information, it went out on Facebook last week. Also, it's on the City of Crest Hill website with the parade route. We'll be doing it the same way as last year, where we'll be driving through town. We have the firefighters, fire trucks, not firefighters, fire trucks, Public Works vehicles, the police department, and the Santa will be making appearances escorted by the Crest Hill line. So anybody have any questions? And thank you all for all the support last week.
Questions of Public Works Director?
Thanks a lot, Mark. I know you worked really hard on all of that, and it showed. I think it was really important. I wish more people would have been there than there was, because it's such an important issue, but it was really presented very well, and thank you and everybody else for everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have two items for you and the council. First item is to approve the updated subdivision ordinance as presented. Again, this subdivision establishes standards for design for subdivisions and for re-subdivisions of incorporated, unincorporated lands and areas to redevelop in respect for public improvements.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the subdivision ordinance update. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries ordinance 1884.
The second item I have for you tonight is the approval of the ordinance for standard construction details as presented at the last meeting.
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Verche for an ordinance approving City of Crest Hill standard construction details. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries 1885.
Okay, anything else, Ron?
That is it, Mayor.
Any questions of city engineer? Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on to Community Development Department. The report is in your packet. Maura is here. She'll be handling the plant commission recommendations in a few minutes. Police Department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything this evening on the agenda. You do have your two-week informational packet with you. I will entertain any questions.
Any questions of the police chief?
Well, Chief, it's not a question so much as it is a compliment again. I know privately with a dear friend of mine, we had an issue where you needed to go and do a welfare check along with the La Porte Township Fire Department, and in the end, everything turned out fine, but it's a rather hectic few hours, and I just want to thank you. It was just so kind of all of you to do that and to help out with our citizens, and I can't thank you enough personally. I really can't, because I was very concerned and very worried, and you took care of that. I appreciate it so much. Thank you so much. And tell all the guys and Jeffrey and everybody, thank you so much.
I will pass it along. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. I have two agenda items this evening. The first one is for a waiver of a one-day liquor license special event. The chief, Chief Clark and myself, met with Ken and Jackie Majewski from Jackie Shots and Slots. They're having a fundraiser for one of their employees' family members who's got some serious health issues. They're looking at Saturday, December 11, during, from 2:00 p.m. until 1:00 a.m., but the outdoors would only be from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the outdoors would be basically for the raffle items, for the food, and for some seating area if the weather is cooperating that day. So I think this goes for a good cause. They proved over the COVID situation that they could certainly have outdoor dining and not have any problems. It'll be the same setup as what it was there. They do have the insurance, so I would ask for a waiver of the $50 one-day liquor license fee for the help and support of this fundraiser.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sapiti for the waiver of the one-day liquor license. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the second agenda item is the Will County Governmental League Holiday Reception. I sent the information to all the council members, asking for the same process that we've used for the last several years in regards to this reception, which is this Thursday at the Patrick Haley Mansion. So any elected official that wished to attend, the city would pay for the cost of the employee, of the elected official. If the elected official would wish to bring a guest or their spouse, that cost for them would be borne by the individual elected official. I would ask for the same process this year, and I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I do have a report in the packet for you also. With that, just a couple of announcements. Certainly, I want to thank my secretary, Maribel DeHarro, for, she did the decorations in this room for a little Christmas spirit. We did not have our party this year because of the COVID restrictions, so hopefully next year, everything will be back in order for the holiday party that we have here. And then I just want to offer my congratulations. We did four straight nights of the public forum for the water meetings, for the possibility of joining the Water Commission for Lake Michigan Water. So I certainly want to make a few comments here, that those four nights, the first night was November 29, we had it at our Public Works facility. There were 20 people that were present. The next night at Chaney-Monji, we had it on November 30. We had 13 individuals that were present. The third evening was at Carillon Lakes. We had 160 individuals present at the Carillon Lakes Forum, and the fourth night was on Thursday, December 2. That was at the Richland Grade School Gymnasium. We had 15 people that were there. A little disappointed in the numbers at three of the four, but the Carillon Lakes one really made up for a lot of that. So I believe that even though that some of the numbers were a little low, I will tell you that I was impressed by the professionalism of the presentation, the knowledge that was out there, the patience and the cooperation of almost all of the people that were present at all four of the forums. There certainly were some great questions that were asked. We did not run or hide from any of the questions. We wanted to have full transparency on this issue. We answered all those questions, and we had all the right people there to answer those questions. Again, the meetings were meant to be informative and educational to all of our residents, and we tried to reach as many as we could. I think we did a great, great job on publicity in regards to these, and, you know, there's still information that's on the website and beyond the TV soon. So I would just say that if anyone has any additional questions, to feel free to reach out to any one of us, and we'll certainly do our best to answer those questions. We will have, our two remaining work sessions before the vote will have to be taken, that will be December 13 and January 10. We will have this issue on the agenda item at both work sessions, and we will have updates for city council of anything else that we have to share with the public at those meetings. So I certainly want to tip my hat to Mark Seifert. He spearheaded this whole project pretty much from start to finish, was involved with almost everything that took place. So fantastic job, Mark. I certainly want to give my thanks and kudos to you. Your assistant, Blaine Klein, was right there with you the whole time. Ron Wedeman was there with you, Ada Martino, all from Public Works. We're all there, and I know the night we had at Public Works, we even had some assistance from a couple of the Public Works employees for parking. So thanks to everybody from Public Works. From Strand, we had Chris Alm, we had Karina Mas and Nathan W. I'm not even going to try to pronounce his last name, but, you know, they helped out very much with the stations and answering the questions. So thanks to Strand. That was really a first-class presentation. We did, we were similar in our presentation at all four evenings, and Chris Alm spearheaded that portion of the four stations, and he did a fantastic job with all of those presentations also. Our city attorney was Mike Sanchi from Spazian Taylor. He was there all four nights to answer the legal questions that we had, and I know in, before that, we dealt with Dana Ludwig for Robinson, and the young gentleman's name, I forget now. Ed was helping with some of the IT stuff for the presentation. I certainly want to thank Steve Golden. He was involved in a lot of the meetings that we had prior to the presentations, and naturally, the city council for being there and showing your support or just to be there and answer any questions that we had. I think we did a fantastic job. I think that it was very professionally done, like I said, and I think we got the information out there, and we will keep the public informed as we go forward here over the next six weeks before we have to take the final vote. So with that, that is the end of my report. I will try to answer any questions that anybody has. Hearing none, we will move on to our city clerk report. Our city clerk, Christine Verchehal. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. The only agenda item I have is an ordinance with council's approval
Our City Clerk, Christine Verche Hall. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. The only agenda item I have is an ordinance with council's approval to appoint a deputy clerk, Karen Kozurka. Her term would start January 10th of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for an ordinance approving the appointment of Karen Kozurka as Deputy City Clerk for the City of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1886 and I thank council for this. And the only other thing is I just wanted to say amazing job on the forum last week. It was very impressive. Great job to all.
And I would just like to make a comment that I think this is a great choice. Thanks for the support from the City Council for Karen Kozurka. I think she's going to hit the ground running here and it's going to be a very smooth transition going forward here when Jan does retire here early in 2022 in January. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments of City Clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our City Treasurer's Report. Our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report, excuse me, regular overtime payroll from November 8th, 2021 through November 21st of 2021 in the amount of $237,904.92. I seek your motion for approval on our list of bills within that same time period totaled
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I think you all entertain any questions if you have them.
Any questions of our City Treasurer? All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Moving on, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business. We have two plant commission recommendations. The first one we are going to handle, well, I'm going to turn it over to, I'm going to turn it over to Maura Rigoni for some opening comments and she's going to lead us through these two separate, one ordinance and one resolution. Fair enough?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Even though they are two separate resolution and ordinance, they're kind of going hand in hand. This relates to the property at the southwest corner of Caton Farm and Broadway. This was part of the Lucky Brothers. This was a gas station that was since had been approved back in 2000 as part of it that the west portion of the property, about the west 110 feet, was going to retain ownership under Mr. Kobinski as he was just going to be selling off the balance of the three acres. So kind of hand in hand, one, there's a plot of subdivision as a resolution before you to create those lots. That would be a Lot 1, which would be that of the gas station, which is, has been approved and going to be under final, is currently under final review. And then the balance of that one acre would remain under ownership of Mr. Kobinski as that would, is still being functioned as part of his operation that he has for diamond construction at 307. At the time of the rezoning for the gas station for Lucky Brothers, that the entire four-acre plus parcel was included in that rezoning, having that whole parcel, Lot 1, in the plot of subdivision for Lucky Brothers and Lot 2, as both being zoned from B3 to, I'm sorry, M2 to B3. It was never the intentions of Mr. Kobinski to have that one-acre parcel rezoned to B3 as he uses it as part of his operation of diamond construction. So it's not actually rezoning of the property at 307 Caton Farm. It's that one-acre parcel immediately east of that. If you look at the, in your packet, there is a plot of subdivision and it's going to be attached as a resolution. Just to give you an idea that that is Lot 2, is the portion that we are talking about the rezoning from M3 to M2. And then we have the plot of subdivision for the entire parcel. Two items as it relates to the rezoning. The parcel was originally zoned M2 prior to Lucky Brothers coming in for rezoning to B3. And also then, as in terms of the plot of subdivision, we are going to condition on final engineering only because we are finalizing the easements internally. We want to ensure that we do have those all in line and consistent with engineering plans final to final recordation. So they're separate but together, all in one. So before we use the ordinance for rezoning from the B3 back to the M2, just for that one-acre parcel, and then the resolution for the final plat for the Lucky Brothers subdivision of Crest Hill.
Okay, any questions of Maura from City Council?
I don't believe that they were able to attend this evening.
Okay. Okay. I will ask three times. The first time, if anyone would like to speak for. We'll take the first one. The first one will be the ordinance for the rezoning at 307 Caton Farm Road. So I will ask if anyone would like to speak for or against the case RZ-21-4-11-1, the applicant Larry Kobinski for the property located at 307 Caton Farm Road for a zoning change from B3 to M2. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. I would ask a second time if anyone would like to speak for or against the case RZ-21-4-11-1, the request of Larry Kobinski for the property located at 307 Caton Farm Road for a zoning change from B3 to M2. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. And a third time, if anyone would like to speak for or against the case RZ-21-4-11-1, Larry Kobinski for the property located at 307 Caton Farm Road for a zoning change from B3 to M2. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium to speak for or against that case. Therefore, to the City Council, you have before you an ordinance establishing a map amendment to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of diamond construction. Mr. Larry Kobinski, motion would be in order.
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for approval of the ordinance. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1887.
Okay. Next on the agenda then would be the Lucky Brothers' final plat at the southwest corner of Caton Farm Road and Broadway Street. You do have information in your packet. I would ask again if anyone would like to speak for or against the request of Lucky Brothers' gas station for the final plat approval at the southwest corner of Caton Farm Road and Broadway, Route 53. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Second time, if anyone would like to speak for or against the recommendation of Lucky Brothers' final plat at the southwest corner of Caton Farm Road and Broadway, Route 53. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. And the third request, if anyone would like to speak for or against the approval of the final plat of the Lucky Brothers' gas station located at the southwest corner of Caton Farm Road and Broadway Street. Please step to the podium and state your name for the record. Address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Therefore, to the City Council, you have before you a resolution authorizing the approval of the final plat of subdivision for Lucky Brothers of Crest Hill. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second. We have motion by Alderman Verche, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments of the motion on the approval? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1127.
Okay. Thanks, Maura. All right, that is it under new business. Does anybody else have any? Okay, moving on to Committee Liaison Reports. Anyone?
Yes, Mayor. If I could just make an announcement for the 2021 Holiday Decorating Contest. Entry forms are available here at City Hall on the city's website, also through Facebook. You can get to the, get to the form. The last day to submit entries is going to be next Monday, December 13th. You could drop them off here or you can email them to me. My email is on the entry form, nalbert@cityofcresthill.com. Winners will be announced at the December 20th City Council meeting at the very beginning of the meeting. So judging will take place between December 14th through 18th. This is open to all residents in the City of Crest Hill like all previous years, so we've gotten a few entries already and look forward to seeing more and festive holiday displays. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Nate. Anybody else?
Yes. I'd like to let the residents know that on this Friday, December 10th, the Richland Portier Committee is hosting a fundraiser at Pops Italian Beef and Sausage located at 227 Weber Road in Romierville. It'll take place between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. When Crest Hill residents and Richland families dine in or carry out, a portion of their purchase goes to the committee's continued efforts to enhance the outdoor learning space at Richland. Thank you for your donation and you only need to mention that you mentioned Richland when placing your order. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Last call. Okay, City Council comments. Positive City Council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anybody like to go first this evening?
Yeah, Mayor, just since we were talking about Christmas lights, I just wanted to thank Public Works Department, Mark and Blaine for decorating City Hall here. I think they did a great job. It looks, looks, looks very good. So thank you, guys.
Ray, just want to do a quick shout out to all those veterans out there as we recognize Pearl Harbor Day tomorrow, December 7th.
Okay, word one. Alderman Dyke?
Nothing to add that's been said already by them two and also to Mark and his staff and everything they did for the water information for the residents.
Alderman Verche?
Nothing to say either. Same thing he says.
Word two, Alderman Jefferson.
I'd like to echo what everyone else has said and kudos to Department of Public Works for the display they put on with the waters, War Committee meetings.
Word three, Alderman Person Oberlin?
Well, I will agree with everything said and I will add that any resident who did not attend those, which was a lot of residents, please look at the videos, look on the website, read the information, do your own homework. That's the most important thing. Research the issue yourself and make an informed decision. This is truly a very important decision in the City of Crest Hill. Thank you.
Alderman Sepiti?
Just want to reach out and tell Mark and his staff, everyone involved with the forums this week, great job. Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Anyone would like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional.
Mike McKinnon with Hydner Properties. I'm here tonight to talk about the northwest corner of Weber Division. I know I'm not an agenda item, so I'll keep my comments rather brief. So in August of 2016, we purchased a property for a myriad of reasons back then. Between us and the City Council, we couldn't come to agreement on the development plans for that property. So at that time, we, you know, we kind of paused our development of that property for a while. And then in summer of 2020, the city reached back out to us and we re-engaged in conversations with the city. It was actually November 9th of last year, we came before the City Council with, you know, plans developed, 13 acres retail in the front and then, you know, the rest of it would be town homes and single-family rental homes in the rear, which was warmly received by the city. So fast forward, you know, we worked arm-in-arm with the city, created the development plan. You may recall this past August, we were approved for our special uses and rezoning for the fuel center. The residential portion never quite made it because there were some issues with the existing TIF.